This meeting to order, so we can keep it short and sweet. This is the City of Kingman City Council Work Session held at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, July 26, 2023. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work sessions, meetings, is to provide the City Council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and be made only as approved by the consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party or on an agenda item if invited to by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for each presentation. So, item number one, well, let's actually, let's have a pledge of allegiance if we could all stand, and I've asked Counselor Pat to lead us.
Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Cameron. Item number one, Public Safety Compensation Step Plan. Staff will present updated Public Safety Compensation Step Plan options. Mr. Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just trying to share this presentation. All right. So, in the work, you recall from the budget workshop, there were some changes to our pay plan. Council had directed us to move to a 10-step pay plan for fire and police and that that pay plan would move up through the ranks in both police and fire. And in doing that, there were some adjustments needed to be able to place people on that step plan and then, which I'll walk everybody through, and then there was a request to consider changing the pay plan and not having overlap in the pay plan. And so, we'll talk about that as well. So, we wanted to just share with the council what, when we looked at the step program and we originally submitted our market analysis and wages, there was originally a step plan for frontline employees for both fire and police. But we wanted to make sure that the council knew that our comparison cities or agencies wanted to share with them what they have. Bullhead is, they have basically a step plan, 10 steps for patrol officer. They have overlap and they have overlap in, for between their sergeant and lieutenant as well. Lake Havasu has overlap in their system. They have a little bit different step system where their frontline police officers have 12 steps, sergeants eight, and then lieutenants 11. And then Mojave County does not have overlap. They have a 10-step plan for their frontline employees and a very narrow band for their sergeants and lieutenants, basically four steps for those positions. In Bullhead, for their fire district, they have overlap and in their positions, none when it gets to the battalion chief level. And then Lake Havasu again has overlap as well. I will also point out that we, when we were collecting this, finalizing the data on this, Bullhead Fire District had notified us that they've gone to an open pay plan and will just stay, what was relayed to us is that they're planning on staying competitive in the market with a market look every single year. So, we report, we wanted to show what their ranges were for their step plan, but as of today, they do not have a step plan. The pay plan development, so we originally, as I mentioned, we had had the 12-step plan and then on the leadership positions, we had proposed the open pay plan for the workshop that was changed to a 10-step plan for officers, sergeants, and lieutenants with steps of 3.5% between each step. And then after that, it was suggested that overlap be eliminated for, as you went up from sergeant and to lieutenant, the police officers would remain at 10. And then the first three steps of the sergeant step plan would need to be eliminated and the first five steps of lieutenant step would need to be eliminated. And then, of course, we would still keep that 3.5% increase. Just as FYI, on the fire side, basically, it looked the same for the original proposed budget for the work session, remained the same for fire and police. And then really, on, if we were to move away from the overlap system, it would basically mean that we were removing the first five steps for fire engineer and for fire captain and the first three steps for the battalion chief of operations, still keeping that 3.5% step increase. On the anniversary date, so kind of the philosophy of placing employees on the plan because that's, that's the work that we had to do after the step plan had been put into place. So, basically, the philosophy of that was that on anniversary date of the employee's service, that the employee will move to the next step on their position plan. So, as an example, for pay period, August 13th to August 26th, and the anniversary date is August 24th, the employee will move to the next step effective on the August 13th pay period unless changes are made to the step plan. The step plan will only be adjusted if the cost of living increase is approved. That's the point of a cost of living increase, actually, is to keep you competitive in the market. And then, once the employee reaches the top of their step plan, they remain there and then get cost of living increases over the time that they remain in that position. So, continuing with the promotional placement, step plan, the step plan with overlap, that it was to move the step on the promotion, the promotional positions pay plan that is just above the employee is current, what they're currently making. So, if the example in this one is a police officer, that's a 10-year officer promotes to sergeant, he or she would be placed on step four of the sergeant pay plan. On the fire side, if firefighter is eight-year firefighter and promoted to fire engineer, he or she would be placed on step four of the fire engineer pay plan. And then, if a step plan without overlap was, was what was, we moved to, obviously, no matter where you were in your years of service, whether that be officer or moving to sergeant or sergeant moving to lieutenant, you would just move to step one because there's no overlap, meaning that basically, if you're a five-year patrol officer and you promote to sergeant, you're going to get a relatively large increase in pay to move to sergeant. And if you're a long time, if you're in the system for 10 years, it's going to be less. The higher in placement, so laterals are a big part of our conversation, they're important, they've been important to us, they're actually a pretty big cost savings, get, being able to hire experienced police officers from other states or other agencies. Laterals would receive credit for their years of service at their other agency or agencies, pretty typical, and new hires with no prior years of service at their other agency or agencies would be hired at entry, with the exception, we do have police recruits who are hired at a different rate until they complete their, their training. Of course, we, we stay committed to doing market study on a regular basis. We've done one, of course, this year, we did one three years ago, or yeah, 2019, so I guess it's technically four years ago, and having that be a pretty regular reoccurring thing that we budget for. So, what we wanted to do is basically share with the council the, what the cost of the step plan is, what the, with, what we did with placing the, the, our current officers or our current sergeants, our current sergeants and lieutenants on the pay plan, we end up with basically, this, this is the, for both fire and police, if you were to adopt the no overlap, so you can kind of see the difference. So, the cost of the work session was 6.3 million for police, for fire, it was 5.4 million. After we were finished placing all of our employees on the 10-step plan, that cost was basically 6.4 million for police and about 5.5 million for fire. And if, in fact, we did, dropped those and had no overlap, that plan would then be 6.4 million and some change for police and 5.7 million and some change for fire. The differences we've provided next to that, which is with the placement, with working with the departments, the placement of our current police officers on the recommended work session plan basically is an increase of $88,605 for police and $8,816 for fire are a total of 90, about 97,000. With no overlap in the pay plan, that's, that really changes, starts changing the pay plan pretty dramatically, jumps for police department up to 118,698 dollars and for fire, it moves those wages up to 303,607 dollars or approximately 422,000 dollars. So, one of the things that we always want to share is what is the five-year forecast then look like for these pay plans? So, with our current placement, our, the current placement as proposed in the current budget, we would have an increase over the five-year period of about 517,000.
Can I interrupt for just a second? That was not part of a packet, so I am seeing this for the first time, this page. The rest of the council agree with me? Oh, you have it. You do not have it?
It's in there.
So, yeah, it's in the one that we have today. It's not in the one that we received yesterday. So, I'm looking at this for the first time.
We must, we, we've, we did a couple renditions and we must have not got that final five-year out. Apologize for that.
Yeah, it's pretty important and we're just seeing it. Okay, continue, thanks.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, the, the five-year estimate cost, again, for fiscal year '24, just as a reminder, that was the 97,000. That total cost of that program over a five-year period is 517,000. The five-year estimated cost for no overlap for the, for no overlap system works out to be about 2.2 million with, of course, the first fiscal year being that 422,000 dollars. And so, again, yeah, apologize for that slide not being a part of the last one that was emailed. So, you'll see the footnote at the bottom that for fiscal year '24, contingency reserves would be used to cover the additional cost. And then, moving forward with our five-year forecasting, we would really basically have to figure out what that additional, how to absorb that additional cost. And I believe that is all the slides, not a lot of slides.
FYI, though, it is on the, on the website, on the city website, this slide right here. So, it was included on that.
Yeah, I apologize. We had included it in the packet but didn't send it individually again, so.
Questions from counselors or staff?
I guess one thing before we get questions, obviously, this is a work session. We're trying to have this wrapped up so that you can, at your five o'clock meeting, that special meeting next Tuesday, approve the 2024 budget. And so, obviously, you can't make decisions in here, but we will be looking for head nods just to make sure that, that we've got it ready for approval on Tuesday.
Ron, can you, and I'm sorry, I should have asked you earlier, so maybe some others are wondering too. The cost of council step session works, the first one on this slide, well, back one, and then it says with police and fire leadership. What, what are we talking about there? What?
So, obviously, in making the determination on where to place our current employees, we want to make sure that we're accounting for years of service and timing, timing in their current position. And so, that's, that's what that means is basically met with the chiefs to make sure that, that that was done correctly.
I had a feeling that's where it was going, but it's not a significant rise as opposed to the other plan, but anyway, thank you.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, you know, when you have a new pay plan, there's going to need to be some adjustments.
Sure.
So, that's, that's what the result of that ended up being.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, can you tell me when that discussion happened in the timeline? Just put it into a timeline for me.
Timing wise, we, we had that conversation a couple of weeks before we had, we were ready to submit the, for the council to have the approval of the budget. So, it was a, it was a couple of weeks prior to, because we were planning on having the budget approved at the last council meeting, so it was a couple, couple of weeks, maybe three weeks before that.
Okay, thank you. I have some other questions, but I want to give counsel.
I have a couple, if I could.
A chant.
Okay, so, you're, you're saying that before we saw the, the numbers and the presentation where we had to decide how we were going to offset the additional expense, you sat down with both of the chiefs to discuss where to put people on the pay plan?
Uh huh.
And that means that not everybody was placed according to their steps then. They were placed differently and that was to avoid compression, I assume.
Correct.
So, we knew because of the overlap that we were already creating compression in the step program.
So, compression, so the definition of a compression in a pay plan is, it depends on what your philosophy is. So, compression in a pay plan generally does not happen in, in advance, when you're advancing somebody from, let's just use the example, I'm a patrol officer and I want to become a sergeant. In that scenario, there is, if, if I'm new and I'm really a great leader and I get promoted to sergeant and I serve as a sergeant for a couple of years, the definition of compression in, is not the 10-year patrol officer who gets his or her years of service acknowledged and put up as a patrol off, or as a sergeant, because that person has had an opportunity to learn from multiple sergeants, that they've watched lieutenants, they've watched the police chief, and they bring with them additional experience. It's kind of like hiring lateral employees, that there's more value for that employee. Now, compression, true compression happens when you, when we're hiring, and we've had this in the past, when we are hiring new employees, and this would be mostly for front, basically frontline employees, compression occurs when you have employee in your organization that's been working for you for six years, they have not advanced, you've not given them raises, and you're basically hiring new employees into the system and those new employees are coming in at or near what you have longstanding employees. That, that is compressed, when, when the word compression is used, that's what it's referring to, is you're hire, you've had longstanding employees in, in a position, whether that's in the police department, whether that's in public works, whether that's in parks. When you're hiring employees and you're not advancing employees in your pay system, you're, whether it's an open pay plan or whether it's a step plan, when you're not advancing those people, compression happens when you hire new people in. Advancement, they're placing people in that pay grade or that new step plan, you get to account for years of service and where, you know, where they deserve to be on that, on that new plan. We have overlap and I would say that almost every organization has overlap in their system. And we have overlap, even in the open pay plan system, you have wage overlap from frontline employees to mid-level managers to department heads. And that overlap is, is designed to recognize additional years of service and be able to place people on, that's why open pay plans are, why organizations like open pay plans, because you've got a minimum, maximum, and midpoint, and you're able to take that employee and, if they've got special certifications, if they did more work to get promoted, then you have an opportunity to place them in that range. But in true compression, an officer that's been in your system for, let's say they've been a frontline officer for 12 years and they wake up one day and decide that they want to be, they want to be a sergeant and they make application, they're chosen, their, their 12 years of service is being recognized, there's value in what they bring as a new sergeant and, but it is not, it wouldn't be titled compression.
Okay, so, if I am a 12-year employee, you are not going to put me on step one when I promote?
No.
Why isn't there anything in writing in this policy that states that as a guide so that five years from now, when we're gone, if we're gone?
Yeah.
We, we know that there is something written in stone that says that will not happen because that's part of the problem is that it doesn't, in reviewing the step plan, I don't see that that is actually a policy that will be followed.
Right. You, Krista, you want to speak to that? I mean, we, we've had a step plan in the past and then we moved to open pay plan and then, but we, there are policies in place and I think one of the things that we've talked about doing, what needs to be done anyway, is our, our, our employee handbook needs to be updated and the pay, this new pay plan was, and moving to this market adjustment, was part of us reworking that, the employee handbook to do exactly what, what you're saying is, because the open pay plan, even our open pay plan, when we went to the open pay plan, we, the HR director at the time had started the work to redo the handbook and she retired and it kind of fell between the cracks, just to be honest. And so, Krista and her team have re-upped on that and that's going to be a big part of what they're doing in this next fiscal year. Did you, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to share, if you go back just a couple of slides, when we do talk about that promotional placement.
The four steps.
The, or.
Putting on step four.
Exactly. That, that covers that if you're that 12-year officer, you're not going to start at step one as a sergeant, you're going to come into the salary above what you were making as a police officer.
And that, so do you have a graph that says 11 years goes to step two and 12 years goes to step three and 14 years go, you know, is there, I don't know that we would be here if we had seen a policy and a graph that would show exactly how we would avoid, you know, having, having these issues where you've got somebody with all of this experience and then they, when you look at this, are making less than somebody that they are managing.
Right.
So, step 10 of the plan is the highest step, whether you're an 11-year employee, 12, 13, 14, you're going to be making what step 10 is. So, step, whatever that step 10 salary is, they would move to whatever step on the sergeant level is above that salary, which in this case, I think was a, was a step four.
So, it's, it's not, on, on the open pay plan, I've seen a lot of problems with them and it's individuals, where the step plan, it's spelled out, that's it. And I like the step plan myself. I, I've worked both and I have seen where certain individuals got promoted or got moved up within the pay scale and the other guy that stayed right where they were. And I, I like the step plan, that's all I'm.
Mayor Watkins, Mayan.
Yes.
At our next meeting, I think that's what the. At our next meeting, I think that's what, the first or second of August, is that correct?
First, Tuesday.
Will there be an option for us to vote on with overlap or without overlap? Because like you said, Manager Fogg, and we're not deciding that tonight.
So basically, what the council will do is have to make a motion to approve the budget, and if no overlap is requested, then council will have to specify that we're, that you're directing us to have a budget that makes this account for no overlap, and we would, and use contingencies.
Right.
Really, I mean, that's how it would, that's how it would look.
Makes sense.
Yep.
And Tina, what you're saying is that wherever you are on the steps, whether it's with overlap, well, I guess it's not really possible without overlap, but let's say with overlap, if you get promoted, you will never be taking a pay cut, you will be going to the step that puts you at a pay grade one higher.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I would say that in our, in our current handbook, although it's outdated, it basically says when an employee is promoted, they qualify, so I will say it's written down, that they, they qualify for up to a 10% increase. So part of that is already part of our handbook. This, again, in having this new step program, that will be memorialized officially to match, to, to match our, our pay system.
And last, I just have a comment I would like to share with my council. The difference in the five-year total, and I guess this isn't year after year, but looking at the five-year total, it's a difference of $1.7 million between a plan with overlap versus the plan without overlap. So there's a significant cost that the city will be incurring if we move to the, and I apologize, if we move to the plan without overlap.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm just stating, I'm, I'm more inclined to go with one with overlap because we've made significant progress to make a step program for our emergency personnel, our emergency employees. And we want to make sure that they're getting compensated correctly, and they'll never be taking a pay cut when promoting. That's all.
Mayor?
Counsel, yes, Vice Mayor.
So they'll never be making less if they promote, but correct me if I'm incorrect, if somebody that is a long-term employee decides to promote, there's a possibility that that promotion will move them ahead of somebody that has promoted early in that position. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that, that's the issue that, that I've been presented with. So I have a couple of, a couple of follow-up questions. Can you tell me what bandwidth means on slide number two? What's, what does bandwidth mean? What's that percentage mean?
Bandwidth is the, how, how long the, how, what the percentage from minimum to maximum is.
Okay, all right. And then I, I agree with Counselor Pat, it's significant when you look at the numbers, but I don't think we're just bound to these two options. Is that correct?
I don't understand.
So I feel like it's pretty aggressive, the number of step plans that are eliminated or eliminated, the number of steps that are eliminated. If we were to decrease the number of steps eliminated, we could also, I, I would be interested to know, like, let's just take the police department, for instance. If we were to reduce the steps that were eliminated, that reduces that number, then at what point is there no overlap? So I would, I would be interested in that.
So the numbers that were, that are currently presented are within the current market. That eliminating, you, you still have to get to the maximum. Are you suggesting we reduce the maximum?
No. I'm, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm suggesting that we eliminate, like, let's just say, hypothetically, we eliminated two steps for police and two steps for fire in whatever categories, and the difference was split between them. I'd like to know what those numbers are. Because to me, in looking at this, I see the difference in cost of council work session, step plan to the cost placement after discussion with police and fire leadership. I see $88,000 for police and $8,000 for fire. I, I'm having a hard time with the spread.
It's because of years of experience within the police department versus years of experience in the fire department. We have new, really new leaders and, and new personnel, young personnel, I can't say young, but new in the fire department, so there's less impact. And in the fire, or in the police department, we have longstanding leadership that basically their, their increase within the steps is the reason for that.
Right.
So it's just really because you, we have very new captains and engineers, and frankly, battalion folks in the fire department. That, if, if we had a really seasoned, longstanding leadership group in the fire department, that number would, would eclipse the police department by, by a lot.
Okay.
That's, that's why they're so, so different.
I just had a hard time with that spread. So I'd like to know, next, I'd like to know, so the information that the employees are seeing in their payroll system, I was made aware that, you know, everybody gets their numbers, everybody gets to look at their numbers, every, so I was made aware that in the police department, I, I'd just like to know what those numbers, what those, those numbers are, because it's been brought to my attention that those numbers have changed, and, and the overlap that was there is not, is not as prevalent. And so I just want to know, has something happened in the last few weeks prior to this workshop? So I would like to, I would like to know that.
There's been no adjustments that, that I've been involved with and, before this workshop. Before the last budget, when the budget was supposed to be adopted, what, what we did was we took the, the council's pay plan, and we placed people on the pay plan, and then we talked to, and that's a different number than after talking with police and fire chiefs and getting people positioned appropriately on the pay plan. Then that's the numbers that you had for the budget approval at the, for the last council meeting that we tabled until this council meeting.
So when were the employees privy to those numbers? What, at what date was that?
So we gave, we, we've shared the original information with the chiefs, and they may have shared that information with their personnel. I think in police departments specifically took feedback on it, and that's the chief, fire chief and police chief were then consulted to make sure that we were getting people placed on the, on the step plan, the way, where they, based on years of service.
Okay, so again, my question is, when was the information available to the individuals when they logged into the payroll system and they could see their numbers for their current, current year?
It hasn't happened.
It hasn't happened yet?
Actually, that's not true. So what happened is when we ran the imports, when Felicia uploaded the imports, they can now log into ESS and do a what-if, and it's in there.
Oh, didn't know that.
So it's, it's really down in there, so it's a what-ifs, it's scenarios.
Well, trust me, they know exactly where it is. So, when was that, when, when was that done?
As soon as the last pay period closed, we had been running these scenarios with the final data prior to the no overlap process. We loaded everything into our test system, ran, ran several payrolls, because we didn't want to have to do a whole bunch of retro pays. And so we went ahead and put that in so we could test it into the live system. So that got uploaded. Yep.
So I guess I'm trying to get a timeline, forgive me, council. I'm trying, I'm trying to get a timeline here. So I'm, I'm looking for when that information from the chiefs was delivered to their staff, and then I'm looking for when those figures were loaded, when they were actually, and there, there's a reason why I'm asking these questions, because I'm trying to figure out, is everybody slotted? Because it's been brought to my attention that PD all of a sudden is, you know, they're, they're not discouraged any longer with their overlap to a certain degree. So I am trying to build that timeline to know how I'm going to make a decision or, you know, give some feedback tonight.
Yeah, all I can say is that we, we basically, after the workshops, we developed where, just on the 10-step plan, where employees would go based on their, on the market rate that they were shown to be at.
Okay, so was the information made available to the individuals the week that the budget was pulled from the council meeting?
So it sounds like they've been, that it, underlying, has been there for a while, but a week before the council meeting where we were going to have the budget, the, the new numbers were incorporated into what we were going, what you, the council, would approve for the budget. What, what we're showing you right here, am I going the wrong way? No, I'm going the wrong way. No, I wasn't going the right. So what, what was in the budget to be approved was the $88,2605 for police and $8,816 for fire. That's what, that's what was in the budget that was going to be approved the last council meeting. So the week before, two weeks before, these were the same numbers, they have not changed.
Okay.
Now, that, I don't know about the test program and, and all that. I just know that prior, several weeks prior to us ever getting to the final budget approval, the slotting had been, worked with both fire and police chiefs, and this, that was going to be the increase to the, to the budget.
Okay. So again, I go back to the steps. I, I mean, there is significant change in whether we choose a, a overlap or no overlap. So i- is there a possibility to reduce those number of steps, and what would that do to
I don't know what it'll do to those figures. It'll clearly reduce the dollar amount, but unless I put them, we place them on the new steps and we see what that impact would be, I wouldn't know off the top of my, my head. And certainly, the largest impact is, like you suggested, fire is the largest impact moving, changing that from the 12, from the 10-step plan that was proposed in the work session to some sort of difference.
Okay. I just don't want to lose, I, I don't want to lose this opportunity. I'm, I mean, we have worked so hard, we have, you know, got this just almost to the finish line, I just don't want to lose an opportunity, and, and I, I appreciate the fact that we're here. I don't know how the other counselors feel. I just feel like we were given best-case scenario and worst-case scenario, and I feel like we're being pigeonholed into one or the other. So I don't know, I, I open for council's opinion.
Mayor Watkins, if I may.
Yes, Counselor.
As long as you're done, Vice Mayor, I didn't mean to cut you off. Tina, I'm just wondering, when we're looking at page eight of our PowerPoint here today, how long, how long did it, how long does it take to run a scenario of the five-year step plan, like showing a difference? How, how long does that take you?
Um.
An hour, two hours?
It'll probably take me, yep, it'll probably take me an hour to two hours. Yep.
Okay. Not to cause too much inconvenience, and I'm not asking for it tonight, but I don't understand why my fellow council members are stuck on this idea of 3.5%. And I addressed this at the original proposal of step plans. You could take the maximum number at step, for instance, 12, when we had it, and you could subtract that number from the step one, and then divide it over a series of 10, and you get, instead of 3.5%, you just get it evenly spread out over the course of 10 years. And I'm pretty sure, Tina, you're, you're familiar with what I'm talking about, right? And if I don't make sense, please stop me. I'm looking at this right now, and I'm wondering a scenario instead of, I'm, I'm wondering about a scenario without overlap, but that still follows a 10-point, a 10-step plan. We abandon this notion or idea of it has to be an even 2, 2.5, 3, or 3.5%. And we run a scenario where $99,272.12 is the cap out for our sergeants, for instance, and the beginning is still the $80,757 number, right? You just subtract it from each other and divide it by 10 to see how much it'll be over 10 years. Basically, every single step would be a difference of $1,851, right? I'm, and then for lieutenants, you do the exact same thing. The difference between each step, instead of it being a percentage, it would just be $1,477.
You're talking about, sorry, starting at 80, though, for the sergeant, for example?
Yes, you still.
For step four.
You still start without overlap for sergeants.
Thank you.
At the $80,000, but you go up after 10 steps to $99,000. It's just, it's just a raw number increase instead of a percentage increase. I'm wondering when it comes, how that would affect balancing the budget. So instead of, we still have the same beginning and end, we expand it over the 10 years, right? And then, I, I just want to know how that would balance the budget, because maybe we can meet this goal of having a step program without overlap, but in order to do that, we would have to abandon this notion of it has to be 3.5%. Okay? We're, maybe we won't get a 3.5%, but it'll be steps, it'll be a clear pay without overlap. And you see a clear increase of, for instance, on sergeants, and this is for, we, we could do this one at a time if we have to, but this is just the example I'm using for sergeants. $1,851.48 between each step. You'll get to the same beginning, the same end result. I'm just wondering, if we could have run the numbers, how it would affect the budget?
So.
Over five years.
Yeah, and doable. It is going to change your police number by a little bit, not a lot. It's not a, it's not a huge number going across. I mean, it's not insignificant either, but you're going to change that, you're going to change that by a certain percentage.
Correct.
What you're not going to change really is the fire number. Because as has been pointed out, you have a, you have people that are new in their positions that are, if you still maintain, it's not, doesn't matter if you have 10 steps, three steps, if you skip and do the, just no overlap, you're going to see that, you're going to see that large increase in, for fire service. Because we don't have any senior, you know, really senior people in the fire department.
Right. Right. And Manager Foggan, I, I think you would agree with me, though, that maybe the reason we're seeing the difference in the step plans between the no overlap, oh, sorry, the no overlap and the overlap is because there's no longer 10 steps. So we're now paying people at a higher rate in a shorter amount of time, right? So, so it does cause a significant difference.
Correct. But it, it, over time, it will. Over time, it will. But initially, it goes back to Vice Mayor's comment, why is 188,000, why is 188,000 and why is 1,800? Right? So you're, you're, you're going to reduce the police and, and maybe you pick and just do police department and not fire. I, I mean, I don't know where council's leaning towards that idea, but in, in the fire department, you're still going to see a large increase. That increase is going to be fairly big for at least the first couple of years as they start, start walking through that 10-step promotional program.
And I understand what you're saying, Manager Foggan, I, I do. I'm just wondering that if, without the overlap, if this idea, right, would reduce the five-year total amount? Because right now, the difference is very steep. Right now, it's showing over the cost, the cost over five years is going to be 2.2 million. I'm, I'm wondering if there's some sort of compromise we could reach, if we could maybe meet in the middle or reduce that cost instead. That's why I'm wondering if we would be able to run those numbers. Now, I don't want to put Tina in the hotspot or, you know, wait on her. That's not what I'm asking. I'm just, this is just an idea I was toying with.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Isn't that similar to reducing two steps in police and two steps in fire? We don't have to go to the extreme of the, without overlap in removing all of those steps that we had. Couldn't that be comparable if we removed one step or two steps in, in each, each area? I mean, I feel like we're speaking a similar language with what, there's a compromise there. And, and I just don't, I don't know what that, what that looks like. And then my, my other question, I just want to confirm that that $97,421 was included in the budget number that we had. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Counselor.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering what this looks like if we do take the two steps out from, when they go from patrolman to sergeant and then also firefighter to fire engineer. Can we see those numbers maybe before Tuesday's meeting?
Or even one step? I mean, even one step.
I think two need to go.
Okay. I, I just don't want overlap.
Maybe let's look at one and two.
Okay.
I think with two, we're not going to see overlap.
Okay.
But I could be wrong.
So I agree that we need to get rid of the overlap. I mean, it might be your philosophy that it's okay to have it citywide. And now I'm kind of worried that we have a lot of departments where managers are making less than their subordinates. But in, in my opinion, and in corporations I've worked at in the past, you don't have a manager making less than the people that they're overseeing, because what is the reward for being a manager, which is a lot more work and a lot more stress? And you're usually going to have problems with retention then, because you've got a manager that does not feel that they are being paid a fair rate, they're not being rewarded for the extra work, and they're going to go be a manager somewhere else. It's a problem with retention. That's my opinion and my experience. So I have a problem with the overlap, and I don't want to walk away from this process where we have made progress until we have everything written in stone. So we had talked about policy that would say that you won't go to step one when you're, when you're promoted. But also, I want to find a way to eliminate at least part of the overlap this year and maybe part of the overlap next year. But I agree with this idea of removing at least the first two steps from sergeant, tenant, the fire engineer, the captain, and battalion chiefs, so that we start chipping away at that. Because what we're looking at, and when I looked at, like, I don't have bullheads in front of me, when I look at HAVU's pay structure, they might have overlap, but they don't, it does not appear to be as significant as, for example, when you go from a step 10 fire captain to a battalion chief, a step one, that, that's a lot of money. Or, you know, the step 10 engineer to the fire captain, $10,000 of overlap. Those are big, that's big overlap. And so I would like to see a way, I agree, we could find some compromise, because what you've provided for us is that, you know, it's going to cost another $422,000. So that, that's significant. We were already stretching to get here, but there's got to be a compromise in here where we can let everybody walk out the door and we don't have what I call compression, where a manager is not making as much as a subordinate. And we, we have everybody walk out the door on the right step, and then we start eliminating steps, because this is going to keep happening if we don't adjust this overlap now. We don't want in five years to have just a big mess of a step plan, because I think that's what you're looking at. If you don't start to sort of fix these big gaps where your 10 years making more than your one and two, three years, sometimes even more steps than that. I think that that's really important, that we, that we walk out of here with a good plan for fixing what I see to be some problems in the step plan. I, step plans, it sounds like have a bad reputation around here, because we haven't used them properly. And I don't want to, I do not want to approve a budget that has a step, a faulty step plan in it, and then we can keep saying, they don't work. Let's make one that works.
They don't work when you don't give the steps.
Right.
Right? That's, that's when they don't work.
And that's the other thing, is we had asked for a policy that would say that we will follow this step plan, and every year, they will go up, and I want to make sure that that comes back to the council as well.
Being worked on.
Okay. Because that is also serious, that I don't, I don't want to see everybody sitting on step one forever, which is, is kind of where people have been.
That's, that's been the history.
In the open pay plan, they've been sitting in the minimum.
No.
We can't have that anymore.
Open pay plan, they've not been sitting at minimum. We have been giving raises and costs of living. So we've, we've actually, in the last four years, we've changed the, the, the scenario of how people are being paid in this organization, where they went, you have a longstanding employee, may have been in this organization for 20 years, and did well in that 20 years to get a couple of raises, a couple of one-time bonuses, and I don't think that the city was doing anything with costs of living. So, I mean, there's been some pretty significant changes to the way employees have been, being paid over at least the last 20 to 25 years.
Well, that is not the story that I am being told, because I, I'm being given examples of employees who have been in their position for a long time and have not seen any kind of raise or are being moved up despite their time in that position.
We'd be happy to share, and I think it's been shared in the past, what we, what we've done with COLAs and what we've done with raises.
Okay. Well, I, I know about the COLAs, but to go through and individually adjust employees according to their time, I'm not sure that that is the same story that I've been hearing from individual employees.
So I would say that the market adjustment piece to that has not happened.
Okay.
That was, that was the purpose of, of what we were, what, well, I mean, in the pay plan, when you get a raise, you got a raise. It's not, you're not going to be at the minimum. That, if you've got a 4% or a 3.5% raise and a 2% COLA on top of that, you got a raise and you, you were at least keeping up with market. Now, I, I will say that when, when our, when the pandemic hit, there was a year where we, we paused, we had no idea what was going to happen with the pandemic. So fiscal year '21, there was nothing budgeted. We went on, for lack of a better word, a really skinny budget, because nobody knew what the, was going to happen with fiscal year '21. But once we came out of the pandemic, fiscal year '22 was raises and COLAs.
Okay, that's different story. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, what, what I want to make sure is that, what I've been hearing is that employees just don't know how to forecast what they're going to be making. And so if they don't have a step plan, there's no forecasting. And I think that with an open pay plan, they may or may not get a raise, they will get the COLA, but there was no way for anyone to know, three years from now, this is what I'm going to make. And so that is the reasoning for why I am so in support of a step plan, because you've got to give those people something to forecast to.
Well, what I would say is there's no pay plan that exists that guarantees an increase. No, no plan, right? There is no plan that guarantees that you're going to get a raise in three years. The open pay plan allowed us to adjust to market conditions. So if there was a, a huge recession next year, and we just simply, it's, I don't want to say impossible, it becomes extremely difficult to balance a budget, and we have, we're trying to keep employees, we're trying to retain them, a 1.5% increase is better than no increase, because they're, in a, in a step plan, there is no way, if you can't do 3.5%, you, you don't get a raise, right? There's no way to say, well, this year, we're going to give you 2%, or this year, we're going to do 1.75%. You either do 3.5% or whatever your step says you're going to do, or you don't do it. That's what, I'm, I'm not, I have no reason to give you anything other than the accurate information. Over the last, from the early 2000s to 2019, 2018, the city had a step plan in place, and people did not progress through the step plan, because the city did not feel like, for, I, I wasn't here, but they were not giving consistent raises, even with a step plan in place. And what, you, if you look at what was happening, you would have, you'd go for a few years, and then you'd get employees that had been in the system, that the city would do large increases, and they would basically max them out. And it wasn't for everybody, it was for certain groups. And then the city would do bonuses, one-time bonuses. And then another year, they would do a raise. And, but it, the raise wasn't 3.5% or whatever the step program was, it was just a raise. And so they weren't, they weren't following there's, the step plan that has been memorialized in the hand, the employee handbook. But that, that's a misnomer, that people are going to know what they're going to make in three years or five years, because there's, there's absolutely no guarantee that any organization, whether it's HAVU, whether it's Kingman, whether, you know, whether it's Phoenix, whatever, there's, there's absolutely no way to guarantee that you're going to be able to honor raises three years from now. And that's the open pay plan, the reason why you have people going to open, the reason that Bullhead Fire District went to open pay plan is, their fire chief said, we're going to stay, we're going to look at the market every year and make adjustments the best that we possibly can or that we can afford. And that's, that's, you know, that's the, that's why open pay plans are considered to be best practice. Because as an organization, when you're balancing the budget, you, if you can only do 2% raises and a 2% cost of living, then that's what you do. And that, but there's, there's, that is, with the step plan, that is something that people count on. But there's not, there's never a guarantee that the city or the organization will be able to honor that.
That's why we have these budget workshops every year, because there is not a certainty, there's not 100% certainty.
Right. Well, and balancing the budget is always, you know, it's a challenge.
It's give and take.
Because wants always, always outpace the resources that we have.
I think we gave a lot when we, with the work session, and you did away, we did away with two of the steps for both police and fire. And for most people I've talked to, they're happy with that. I think we should go with that for this year, and then next budget session, next budget season, we reexamine that. I like what Counselor Pat said about, you know, let's be sensitive to cost also, especially five years down the road. What are we saddling another council with? So, and the second thing, another idea that keeps on popping into my head is, how many numbers, how time, many times are we going to tweak this, and how many work sessions are we going to have? Because that's what keeps on popping up. You want to keep on tweaking the numbers. Let's go with the developed plan that was first agreed upon in that work session. You did away, we did away with two steps for both fire and police, and that's a good start. Is it the end? Maybe not. But let's try that for a year and see how it goes, and then we can make adjustments again.
So, um, just, I don't know.
Oh, John.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, John.
Mr. Foggan, I noticed that between the overlap and the, without overlap, the ending results are the same as far as the base salary, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. On, without the overlap, when they reach step 10 and they get promoted, did they go to 1?
No, they would, well, yes, if you have no overlap, they would go to 1.
Okay.
That's correct.
So they, in actuality, there's less steps without the overlap? Maybe not, because if they're doing 10 years as a police officer, then they become a sergeant for seven years, then.
The answer is yes. That's on one of the slides that shows that there'd be a cutoff, and there'd be only five steps or four steps or.
All right. Bottom line is, they'll get to the same results.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what we, what we can do is, we can give you the scenario of eliminating one step, two step, three step, and have a total for, for you. And again, you know, I, I don't know how much to commit to this, because, I mean, we're, you could look at the numbers infinitely and rearrange them a million times, but we can give you what happens with first, second, and third steps eliminated, and what that, what those totals end up looking like. And then when you adopt the budget on Tuesday, which we really need you to do, we, the, we can say that the worst-case scenario, I don't want to call it a worst-case scenario, the most expensive scenario, is the no overlap with $422,000, or you can choose to do police and not fire, if that's your choice.
Now, there's no way we should do police and not fire.
Well, and I.
I mean, if you're going to do one, you need to do both.
I will tell you that it is highly unusual to not have overlap in your, in your fire pay, and.
Well, I think that we, it sounds like we have already addressed most of the problems within the police department by meeting with the chief and placing them on the step program, not according to time served. So that is a big part of the expense, right? I think that we, so that's already been considered. I think that we should take that into consideration. We should look at cutting two steps from sergeant and lieutenant, the first two steps, and then look. and then look at cutting the first two steps on the fire engineer, fire captain, and the battalion chief ops. And consider in the next year, in the future budget, possibly cutting back on more of that overlap. But it seems like that is a good compromise at only chipping away at part of the overlap this year. I, I'm hoping that it doesn't add that much more expense since we've already taken care of the police department's overlap by placing them. And then also, if we could get in writing that policy that would show exactly, and everybody knows exactly where they will go according to years of service, where on the step plan they would be placed if they were promoted. That would be very helpful.
The policy is going to be what that statement in, in, in this slide is. So that, that will be the policy.
But, well, the slide doesn't exactly say that if you're a 12-year, you go to this step, or a 16-year, you would go to that step, right? It's just, or do they all just go to step four?
They'll all go to step four.
Anyone that's been in, that's already maxed out.
Right.
Is that right?
That's correct.
So anybody that's 10 years or more automatically goes to step four.
Correct.
So I would just like to have that in writing.
Sure.
As part of what we approve.
Sure.
And then, I don't know if you're on board with the two. Miley?
Yeah, I don't think the, the four steps is going to work. I'd say we cut the two this year and then work on it from there.
Sean?
I, I disagree with Councilwoman Steely. I agree with Mayor Watkins on this one. Either you do the, my, my idea, which is step 10, step one without overlap, divided by 10, just the base pay instead of this percentage pay. Tina, I'm not trying to create more work for you, okay? If, if you got time to do it, great. If not, we'll worry about it next year.
Your suggestion, Counselor, is not, is not difficult.
Okay. I, I just don't want to create more work because I can't stand it when more people create more work for me, so.
It will, it will be work, but.
Right.
That, that aspect is not hard.
Right. I would, I would personally like to see that instead of a cut of step one or step two of certain ranks. And if, if not, I'm going to be agreeing with Mayor Watkins on this one and then we could readdress the overlap issue next year.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I, I respectfully disagree. I just don't, I don't think it's enough. I don't, I don't think we were given a fair opportunity to, I mean, we were given best case or what, what we discussed in the budget, then we were given absolute worst case. So I, I want to see something that is more in line with being conservative but yet addressing our overlap. And I just, I don't think that your option, Counselor Pat, is going to be enough to correct that. So I'm going to have to agree with the majority.
Well, also, I would raise the question, what's stopping the rest of the employees and the whole, and the whole system of wanting steps taken away and readjusting it for them too? I mean, you know, this is what we're starting. This kind of, you know, so what's stopping the, the other two-thirds of the workforce from complaining about it?
In my opinion, I feel like the market adjustment, the market compensation study addressed those areas and we didn't, we didn't negate that.
But did that market study also do it for police and fire? That's what the whole goal was of it. Now, and we, and so in that work session, we gave them a bonus. We took away two steps, which made us more equal and even better than a lot of the competition.
Correct. I, I definitely agree with you, but we did not take care of the overlap. So yes, we did bump, but we did not take care of the overlap. So I think this is taking care of the overlap.
I think in most organizations across the country, you will find compression overlap from time to time. Oftentimes, when you take a manager's job, you also oftentimes are given an opportunity for a bonus depending on performance, which then puts you above the people of what you've been making. Because it's, that's why you take a salary job. So that compression and, and that, that happens in the workforce. And I don't think we're ever going to be able to do away with it. And then, of course, there is the open pay plan, but there's the evils about that. So, you know, I think what we made in that first work session is a great start. Let's start that and see what we can do with it. Let's, let's try it for a year.
I think I see what you're saying, Mayor. We can't have perfection be the enemy of the good.
Exactly.
And I don't think this is the end. So I, I'd like to see adjustments made next year, too, and I will be in favor of readjusting at that moment in time. I don't think we're fixing everything in this workshop and I just, I just respectfully disagree with you.
Understand, understand.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
I would like to see both comparisons, Counselor Pat's and what I suggested. We'll look at them both and then we'll look at the whole thing on Tuesday and go from there.
And of course, being sensitive to the budget.
Correct.
Okay. Two steps. We'll, we'll look at then, we'll look at two steps and we will look at no overlap with just whatever the difference is between no overlap and the max.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'd also like to know, with Counselor Pat's scenario, I would like to know if that takes care of the overlap. So I, I would like to know.
That's what he's suggesting.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure because that's not what you said. So I, minusing the two steps should take care of the overlap, but I also want to know if Counselor Pat's suggestion takes care of the overlap as well.
No, the two steps does not take care of overlap. Counselor Pat's does.
Okay. Well, perfect.
It just doesn't march, it won't march them through as quickly at that 3.5%.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, I guess we'll see.
We will wait for the results on Tuesday. Actually, I'm sure Tina will work on it and get it done quicker, to us quicker than that because I know, Tina, you will. So we appreciate that. Any other comments from counselors or council? Okay. One thing, I appreciate you being here tonight. I appreciate the discussion we've had and all of staff that is here to participate and view. We appreciate your input. And we are adjourned.